Good evening, everyone. This time I will open the meeting and ask that we all shut our phones off if we have anything electronic that might interfere with the meeting. And again, welcome. And this time I'd ask if there are any conflicts of interest amongst the council members? No, thank you very much. So I'm just looking for the adoption of the published agenda for this evening. Council Rogers and Council Snively and Council Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When the time is right, I do have a notice of motion. And also, I believe there may be one correction in 8.4. It says Word 4, but I believe it's Word 3. The Robinson Planning.
Yep. Right on. 8.3. You're right. Thanks for that. Any other? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. Mr. O'Shea, please. You got it, Doc.
Item 5 on the agenda, adoption of minutes. 5.1, that the minutes of the regular council meeting from October 1st be adopted as presented.
Council Birkman and Council Rogers, any questions? All in favor? That carries.
5.2, that the minutes of the special council meeting held April 16th, 2018 be adopted as circulated.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Maloche, supported by Council Birkman. Any questions? All in favor? That carries.
5.3, that the minutes of the special council meeting of April 23rd, 2018 be adopted as circulated.
Moved by Council Bondi, supported by Council Snively. Any questions? All in favor? That carries.
And 5.4, that the minutes of the quarter revision held September 17th, 2018 be adopted as circulated.
Moved by Council Rogers, supported by Council Bondi. Questions? Oh, Council Snively.
Through your worship, just, I'd like to know if we ever met with Urka on the cleanup of the drain upstream from this?
Do we have anyone to give an answer? Okay, our acting CAO, our deputy CAO, Mr. Nepse.
Thank you, worship. Through your worship, we have met with Urka. We continue to pursue options for cleaning up the drains in terms of moving forward, noting that it's a natural watershed. So yes, we work, we're working with them through it, but nothing as far as an immediate solution right now.
Further to that, did they give you any date whatsoever they would look into this for a cleanup? Because it's obvious part of, part of the problem is the cleanup.
Through your worship, no, I don't have an exact date on that. We have flown in with a drone though to, in order to be able to see it more visibly where those blockages and where those issues are and where we're working with them to move forward with a mitigation plan that way.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, sir. So we need a phone call. Yeah. All in favor of the motion? Motion carries.
Item 6.1 on the agenda, your worship, was originally a delegation request. It has since become a full administration report with recommendations. That would be Planning Report 2018-43. And this is in reference to a temporary sign request by the Essex Centre BIA as it pertains to signage at Town Hall from November 6th to the 25th to promote the Essex Centre Downtown Dollars program. So Mr. Watson's report is here this evening for receipt and with the recommendation that permission be granted to the BIA to place one event advertising sign on an annual basis on Town Hall lands for special events organized by the Essex Centre BIA for a maximum of 30 days and further, not more than one sign advertising a BIA event shall be placed on Town Hall at lands at any one time.
Moved by Council Volk, supported by Council Snively. Any questions? Council Bondi?
Just, this is our opportunity. Somebody more well-versed in what the BIA dollars are, maybe somebody could give a little pitch. I don't know if Council Bjorkman or, it would just be good, give a little pitch about what the dollars are because we know, but not everybody out there may know.
Sure. Council Volk.
Certainly. So the BIA offers BIA dollars that can be bought at the Royal Bank. If you spend $90, you get $100 worth of BIA bucks. So it gets you a 10% discount to be able to spend in any store in the centre that accepts those dollars. So it's just a promotion to spend locally for the Christmas season. Thank you.
Okay. Motion carries.
Your worship, 6.2 on the agenda is a presentation of recognition to Mr. Al Deemer from our Public Works Department. And it's in recognition of his recent Certified Road Supervisor certification. And I understand you, your worship, as well as Mr. Nepse or our WDCAO will be providing the presentation.
Thank you very much, sir. I got this in the mail a couple of weeks ago and from the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors. Again, we have an excellent employee working for the town of Essex. More proof we hired the right person. So tonight we'd like to recognize one of our dedicated town staff, Mr. Al Deemer. And it says on here, it's pronounced "De-mur." Thanks, Alex. "Al recently completed the Certified Road Supervisor certification through the Association of the Ontario Road Supervisors. This certification is a significant accomplishment both for Al and our municipality. It recognizes a high standard of education and experience for public works professionals throughout Ontario. With this certification, Al joins over 1,400 certified professionals in the province who have a deep knowledge of public works technologies, regulations, and the process of how we maintain and manage public roadways. Al has been a dedicated employee with the town for more than 22 years, and with this certification, his education and experience will continue to serve our citizens." And now I'd like to invite Mr. Nepse, our Director of Infrastructure and Development, and also our Deputy CAO, to say a few words about Al and his accomplishments. I might be in here.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to add on to what you said and say a few things about Al and the good work he does for the town of Essex. A lot of employees aren't here to be in the spotlight, but I think it's really important that we highlight some of these achievements that they've obtained and the successes they've had. Al obtaining his CRS certification and continuing to elevate his training really speaks volumes about what type of employee that Al is for the town of Essex. In the years of experience that I have with Al, I really have found that Al treats his job here like he treats any project he would do at his own home, which says a lot. He continues to contribute to the town. His efforts with the operations department is only going to ensure success for the town of Essex and will allow us to be better. And that's really what it's all about. So again, I really truly want to say congrats. Good on you and good for the town and keep up the good work.
Okay, Mr. Deemer, if you come up front here, I've got a certificate to present. Now, to Al, a long time before. Oh, yeah. You're looking for recommendations on how to hang that certification? You may want to talk to Shelley. She's got a couple along the way. I'm sure she can give you some advice. Fell.
8.1 on the agenda is Economic Development Report 2018-08. And this is in reference to the Harold Streetscape Plan and Community Improvement Program Review. Said report for receipt this evening by council.
Moved by Council Snively, supported by Council Bondi. Any comments? From our administration? Anything you'd like to say, Nelson, please?
Thank you. Through your worship, the Streetscape Plan took about, around four months to complete. We had two public open houses, tremendous amount of online, online input. I think we received over 200 surveys online through Facebook and through our website. The feedback was tremendous and it really framed how this report, how this report came together. So there's 39 recommendations in the report. And we're going to try and get through all of them, but again, these things take money and take investment. So the other one was the CIP review. There's some recommendations in there that administration can start on immediately. The recommendations in the actual Streetscape Plan would take some kind of capital investment from the town of Essex. So the plan is there, the strategy is there. We just got to fit it in the budget somehow.
Council Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not even sure who my question is too, but being that our budgets are kind of, I would say tighter now, there, when we have a five-year budget, there's less room for political, for politicking, I guess. So how do, like, I found the 2018 budget really challenging. Council didn't have really a lot of say. So going forward, how are we going to identify priorities and get those in the budget? Or are we going to work on this when council has a visioning session and then pull off a couple of things that we can start to work towards? Or are we going to bring it back to the businesses, the chamber, and say, what are your priorities? Like, what do you see our next steps together as a council and as a community?
Thank you, sir. So in terms of next steps, I mean, we're always in, we're always in contact with the chamber and the community organizations as well as those businesses. And they provided that input, that framed this study. Next steps, I mean, we're having conversations as administration right now with finance and how we fit that in. It's going to come back to council. We're going to work on something, but that's, that's a question more specifically to our Director of Finance for Corporate Services.
Okay. Yep. Okay, Mr. Watson. Morrison, I was just looking at you.
Through the chair. We're currently working on the 2019 budget and the four-year forecast, so we're developing that. We do have the Harold Streetscape Plan. We have the Essex Streetscape Plan. I think that will fall with council and their vision for the future for the next four years, kind of how they want to govern, their key priorities. So if that's a key priority and it's something that you want to include, we can come up with a plan to finance that. It may mean taking a few things out, but that'll be a decision of council once we get to that point.
Now, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that, you know, one of the recommendations from the Stensky-Kelly Plan was a series of changes to the CIP documents and our policies. And we'll be looking at that. We've noted all of them. Normally, we would do a year-end report to council in December, but we'll delay that until January so we can report to the new council. But it will be essentially a report saying how successful the CIPs have been in Harold Essex Centre and changes to policies that come from this study.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bjorkman?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I'd just like to say it was, it was a great exercise. I went through the Streetscape Plan. What I think is very important, it's the same thing we did with the Essex Streetscape Plan, is it gives us a long-term vision. It gives us a blueprint of where we want to see our downtown area five, 10, 15 years from now. It'll take that amount of time to implement everything. I think what's good now, though, is we can actually work, create economies of scale by working with, with the two urban areas at the same time. If it's time to buy benches, when it's time to put in trees, when it's time to purchase other things that we need to improve that streetscape, now we're looking at two centres. We're looking at more opportunity to save, where we bundle things together and do the work in the two centres at the same time. So I think it's a great idea. We've already started with it in Essex Centre. Again, it's that comprehensive plan so that when you're done, you've done something here, you've done something there, and the third piece is in the middle, but it actually all comes together when you're finished. So it's really important to have that. So it's a great thing, and I'll be looking forward to working with it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Anything? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. And just before you go, Mr. O'Shea, can everyone hear everyone up there? You're okay? Yeah? Okay, good enough.
8.2 on the agenda is Corporate Services 2018-13. Reference right-of-way cleanup cost recovery for receipt this evening.
Moved by Council Bondi, supported by Council Bjorkman. Any questions? Council Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe I need a new iPad because it won't stay up anymore. It's had its four years. In terms of, let's not talk about any particular contractor. Let's talk about two cars on an accident on the road. So the two cars come to an accident, there's oil all over the road. Who cleans, whose responsibility is it to make sure that that is cleaned up? I think that's one of the questions that's coming because we have, you know, we have fire, we have EMS, we have police that show up, we have tow trucking companies, one or two or whoever. At the end of the day, it's our job to make our roads safe. And if there is environmental cleanups or glass, do we send public works out there to sign off on it? Because the reality is about one out of every 25% of cars, of car accidents that are left on the side of the road, companies don't get paid for. So who's to say they're being diligent cleaning it all up? So that's my, is it our job to make sure after an accident, the road is clean? Or is it, whose job is it?
Do we have someone from management with that answer? I think I read it in the report, but that's everybody here. Mr. Nepse? Okay, thank you.
Through your worship. That's a loaded question. That's a good question. As far as the ultimate responsibility, it is our road ultimately. The accident site, though, becomes that, that becomes that. It becomes an accident and becomes under the control of the, the police at that time. And they're the ones that, as noted in the report, they're the, they're the ones that are delegating out the responsibilities for the accident cleanup. So to, if that road is closed, whatnot, I would believe it would be the OPP at that point that reopens the road. But that's something I would like to confirm, that specific question, and get you a specific answer for that. So in terms of, I guess, the interpretation of what was asked originally on the report, I think we provided you, you know, the answer on collecting and reimbursement, but I can get you a specific answer on that specific question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Further to that, so for the people that don't know the history of this, we were approached by a couple of tow trucking companies in our municipality that have attended to accidents on municipal roads. They've cleaned up those accidents and not got, received payment for it. They haven't received payment for it because the people didn't have that liability insurance. Like, tow truck companies cannot go after the personal insurance of the drivers of the car. So now, we have 25% of these cleanups, the tow truck companies have to just absorb the costs. So, you know, when police show up, they get paid. When ambulance shows up, they get paid. When fire shows up, they get paid. Our tow truck companies aren't getting paid. So to me, that's a problem because they're doing work on municipal roads. I understand, this is not against administration, I understand where administration is coming from in the report, saying, no other municipalities do this. But I'm saying, what are the other solutions? Do we lobby the province on their behalf? If there's an accident on the King's Highways or the 401 series, tow truck companies can bill the Ministry of Transportation. So that's something that they do because that happens there. So at the end of the day, and it doesn't happen all the time, but at the end of the day, say there's a whole bunch of accidents in our town and tow trucking companies are going, well, I'm not going to clean that up because they don't have insurance and I'm not going to get paid. So why am I going to clean it up? And if I'm going to clean it up, I'm just going to do a half-assed job because I'm not spending, I'm not sending my guys there cleaning up all the grease and all the oil and all the gra, glass on the road because we're busy and we're not going to get paid for it. And then, it's our responsibility to keep the road clean. So that's where I think there is a disconnect here with, with all of our municipalities, actually. I'm hoping that the new term of council, I know it's not a priority, I understand it's not a priority, but one day it could be. It could hit us hard again. So I think it's something we need to keep on our radar, saying, you know, is this fair? Is there something we can do? For example, by law goes out and they cut wrong grass. They, they get a contractor to cut wrong grass. They charge an administrative fee on that. Maybe that's the model we have to go through. If our town do, do a cost recovery system for these accidents, they put on a 25% administrative fee so that we are not out money. I'm not saying that that's what we need to do, I'm just saying that I don't think that this should fall off the radar completely because it is an issue. And at the end of the day, it is our municipal responsibility to keep our roads clean. And if the people that aren't keeping our roads clean aren't getting paid, they may eventually not do a very good job, and I wouldn't really blame them because they're not getting, nobody here, sitting up here, shows up tonight not getting paid. Everybody out there, maybe, but I'm here because I get paid, right? So why would you do a great job if you're not getting paid? That's just my rant.
The votes? Thank you, worship. Need I remind council, I had this on tonight to speak to under 15, 15-1, because I put it on the agenda over a month ago. And with the election, everything taking place and different issues, it was put forward, put forward, put forward, and it was on the agenda tonight. And the reason I put it on the agenda tonight is because of this. And it's not confusing, and it's not complicated. And we're going to make it complicated. I won't be around to make it complicated, but it'll be one of those things that becomes a logistic nightmare when it shouldn't be, wasting tax dollars. Right there, sat Roger Bosley from Bowes Collision, and the gentleman from County Towing sat with him. And they both spoke about cost recovery during a cleanup because, or during an accident because their only job is to go to the accident, grab the vehicle, and leave. That's their only job. And they're not directed by the police to do it. It's not the police's job to tell those gentlemen to clean it up. They do it under one way, under goodwill. So what did they do? They come to council and they said to council, hey, we're not getting paid for this. We're spending a lot of time out there, and not only that, it puts our employees in jeopardy with them walking around in the road with cars going around in the dark, even though they're vested and lit, and we're concerned about that. But if we can get cost recovery for it, like all businesses, it makes it a little easier. You know what council did? Council agreed with them. You're right, Rod, you're right, the other gentleman. And then, you know what council did? We directed administration a right of policy because we said to them, we're going to pay you for that. That's what we said to them. So somebody can go back and check, and everyone can get in a big front that they want, but that's what we said to both those gentlemen. That's why I brought it here because it's one of those things, I want to seal the envelope before I leave this chair. We agreed. Now we're talking about tonight, about policy and how are we going to pay them? This council already agreed to pay them. They were waiting for the policy. They never got it. We agreed, people. Don't leave it at that. Let's have some more discussion if you want, but that's what we agreed to do. Go back, watch YouTube, and then call me up tomorrow and say, vote, you were wrong. I'll take a wager with anybody right now, whatever you want to pay. I bet that I'm right. Make it thousands because I want to make it worth my time. That's what we do. Anyways.
I'm finished. Thank you, worship. Yes, I was, I was not in attendance at that meeting, but I read the reports afterwards. I agree that there's, there's something to look at. I looked at a number of other municipalities, I looked at a number of other areas in Ontario and what the, what the normal course events is. And the normal course events is that the towing companies do take care of anything that's on the road. The parts are on the road, are in the right of way, they get picked up. But if they're off the shoulder, if they're other places, it's not necessarily them that takes care of it. Now, that leads into, okay, so now you've got glass that's over there, trucks are going or pulling it back onto the street. There is areas here that we need to really look at. I do believe it's something we would need to do countywide, as Council Bondi was saying. It's not just our municipality. We need to do this as a group because we've got county roads running through our municipality as well as our town roads. So I believe it's something we should keep on our radar. It's something that we should get back to and look at because we do have a limited number of, of companies that provide this service to us. And it's something that we need to, to keep up. So I believe it's worth looking at. I also believe it's something that at the county level, we would probably have to drive it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council votes? I heard everything Council Bjorkman said, and I just want to reiterate. We don't have to go to county council. We don't have to do anything, Council Bjorkman, in all due respect to you. All we have to do is back the bus up to what we collectively agreed to do that night, and that was put a policy in place. Why are we once again putting processes in place to delay financial stability to those who are deserving of it? Because those two companies are just going to walk away and leave us standing there. Because if they called me when I went to a council and this council agreed to pay me and they haven't paid me yet, when they call me, I just go, no, can't tonight. There's no law binding me to it. I can't believe they haven't walked away yet. So now, we're putting it back on the table again when we already agreed to it. We're going to write a policy again, and then we're going to ask county council to agree with it so our local businesses that have nothing to do with Lake Shore, Kingsville, any of them, can get paid. I don't care what these companies do, and I don't care what Lake Shore is doing, care less. It's not my problem. But for the next two weeks, this is my problem. And we should be doing what we agreed to do and not opening it back up again, people. It's not complicated. Administration could have a policy in place if they, if they put their nose to the grindstone within two business days, I would assume, maybe three. But not where we could agree at the next, our last council meeting to do it, instead of holding these towing companies hostage after we agreed to do it for them. Deputy Mayor Maloche?
Thank you, through your worship. I was also not at that meeting, but I did read the report. And I thought the big concern was the, they were actually getting stung for the towing and bringing the car back to, the junk car to their location.
Demerit.
Demerit and all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
So I don't know if it was just about the cleanup on the, on the roads, but I thought it was more about they wanted us to pay them for the towing that they did and then try and collect it as a, as a town. And I think that's what we're reading in this report too, that administration's not really in agreement with, with us doing. But I would, I would say that we should be, I can, I can understand their plight, but I think we should be lobbying provincial government to set some standards in place and, and try and make it similar across the whole province. Whatever, whatever's going to happen, whether the province decides that municipalities are responsible for collecting and doing that collecting and everything, or whether, or whether the province is going to step up and do something. I drive up Walker Road every morning at, early in the morning between 6:00 and 7:00 to go into work. I've seen a lot of accidents because it's a busy time of the day. Same thing on the way home. Up Walker Road, all the way from Riverside Drive, I see a lot of accidents. And it's not always the towing company that's doing the cleanup. I've seen firemen pushing brooms there. I've seen police officers pushing debris to the side of the road, not necessarily with a broom, but there's a number of people that are usually involved in the cleanup of whatever's laying on the road. Sometimes now even today, if I see an accident in a rural area, maybe I've see, you still see remnants of debris on the road and, and the bigger pieces at the side of the road or something like that. And I would imagine that our road crews at some point in time go through and collect that, or maybe some of the neighbors actually stop by and pick that up and clean it up. that, or maybe some of the neighbors actually stop by and pick that up and clean it up. But, um, I, I know that it's, I know that it's an issue. Maybe we can look at something, uh, you know, like a, a small fee for doing the cleanup on the road, but I, I surely would like to talk to the police department and the fire department first before we set that in place. You know, those are the, those are the people that are normally on the scene, and, uh, they could probably give us a better indication as to who's doing what and what's all involved and, and that kind of thing. So, that's, uh, I, I really do think we need to lobby the province and, uh, like Councillor Bondi was saying, and just, uh, keep it in the back of our heads, not let it slip away in this new term of council. Thank you.
Sure. Counsel votes. Thanks for your patience in allowing me to speak. Two, two points of interest. One is, one is, the town of Essex isn't going to pay a nickel because the driver at fault in the, charged, chargeable at the accident, when the town cements or pays Roger whoever cleaned up, we, we, we charge that back to their insurance company. The taxpayers aren't going to pay a nickel. And the problem Roger had with the demerage in terms of the vehicle, he says, "The problem is, somebody gets in an accident with a $500 car, and the demerage I charge him, he comes and he has to pay me $750 for the demerage because it sat there for a month." He said, "The guy just leaves the car there. He doesn't want the car." So, he says, "I got a junk, smashed up car sitting up taking my, my property." And he says, "It's just not once or twice." He says, "It's not uncommon, I've three or four vehicles sitting in my compound yard." And if anybody's gone by Roger's place, you know how tight real estate is for them, and he's got three or four vehicles that nobody wants, they're not even going to come get them. They're going to pay more to get the piece of junk out of there than what it's worth." So, he's stuck with this car, and he can't even get rid of it. Now, he's got to pay somebody to take it to the junkyard, and that's the problem he has. And I get that, and if you don't get it, then that's beyond me. So, I'll just leave it at that. And that's why we said, "Let's write a policy that talks to all those things," because that night it was so confusing just to stand up and go, "Yes." The intent was to write a policy, council reviews a policy, endorses it, recognize and we agree to give them cost recovery because insurance pays for it all. It's not confusing, people. Don't make it that way.
Thanks for allowing me to speak one more time.
Anyone else? Councillor Snively.
Through your worship. Just one situation that I'm quite familiar with was a van at Colchester that ran off the road into federal water. And I understand the cost recovery to county towing was quite steep, but in that case there, okay, this is, this is a case that the federal government should have paid. And we approached, we approached the federal government, and still, we're waiting, I think we're still waiting for a response on that one. Now, I, I forget what the cost was. It was up there in the thousands and thousands, six, $7,000. And I understand, I understand what the towing companies are going through, but, on the other hand, to have the ratepayers pay for cost recovery on that one situation, I think it's wrong. I mean, that's a federal, that's a federal issue there. The federal government should pay for that to be lifted out of that water. That's, that's all I got to say on that response.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any more? Because I have a few comments and I want to make, and then that's going to be the wrap-up. Nope? Last chance. Councillor Bondi.
Mr. Mayor, I can provide a little bit of clarification and probably bring Councillor Volks and where you are, but like, we, from what I understood is that towing companies came to us with a case file, and we were going to use it as an example, and our CEO was going to try to see if she could cost recovery that one. I do not remember doing a whole policy. I do remember talk about a policy with the van in the lake case, but I do not remember a policy going forward because it's, it's big, it's a big file. But I do remember one case with a young woman who, her car was totaled, she actually died, and her car is at County Collision to this date, not recovered. County towing had to clean it up, clean it up off the road, clean the car up off the road, clean the car on the road, and they still haven't got paid. In theory, it's a municipal road, right? They did our work because they cleaned our road. They can't get the money. Could, the, the question was, could we go get the money from the insurance company, put on our fee, and hand the rest of the money over to the contractor who cleaned up the road? That was what we were going to experiment with. I still think we should see if, if that's a possibility, and I think we should do the provincial thing like the rest of us are saying here and not let it, and then still go to the, the cars in the lake, right? The, the van in the lake that went in the lake, it was a hundred meters or a thousand meters, I think, away from our water intake, leaking oil and gas. The federal government does not work fast, the provincial government does not work fast, so when a vehicle goes in the lake, we need to figure out how we can get it out and get the money back. So, our ratepayers are responsible for it, but our water is still taken care of.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We're starting. This meeting that we said we would pay, we got a, I will find out from the clerk tomorrow, can we get back there and see what exactly was said on television or whatever? We'll get that because I don't remember saying we'd pay. So, that'll be the first one. And then, Councillor Bondi made a few accusations that, I don't know if they're true or not, she says this and she said that, and I'm not saying you're wrong, but I would like proof that few of the statements you made was, is, it isn't, you know? That's all I would like to say. And again, that'll be on this thing, we'll be able to see it in a day or two. With regards to not including the county, I'm prepared, I'm going to talk to Deputy Mayor Maloche. We have a meeting Wednesday night under new business. I've got it jotted down here that we should be bringing this up to the county also because this is a problem for all of us, not only in Essex, the whole county, all of Ontario, as some of yous have said. Uh, we had a council member saying, "He doesn't care about the Comshire or Leamington. What if we have an accident right here on Naylor Side Road, Ironertown Line?" They bring somebody in from Kingsville, a wrecker. How are you going to charge them? Like, you know, uh, we don't care about the rest of them. We do care. We care about every, I do. We care about every one of them. We want them all to get paid. But, as this report says, and I'll read this for the people out there that haven't got it, linked to strategic priorities. We've asked for this thing. Third part contributes to the following council's strategic policies. Manage the town's infrastructure in a responsible and efficient manner. Number two, manage the town's finances and human resources in a responsible manner. To me, that means I'm not taking that taxpayer's dollar and that taxpayer's dollar and paying that guy when somebody else should be paying for it. I've heard that we should pay for it, charge the insurance company. Why is the insurance company going to pay us if they're not going to pay the person that was in the accident and, you know, pay for that? They won't pay him. Why are they going to pay us if we charge them? So, and we do need to lobby the government, that's for sure, but guaranteed, we will bring this up Monday under new business at county council and see where it goes from there because we need all the help we can get to get this dealt with the best way possible. Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor. All in favor?
What was that, a motion?
Oh, received. Do you want to read it? To receive this report.
Yeah, but I'm the holder, so I want to.
No, you're coming, sir, you're going to come up later.
Okay.
Okay? Like, we asked for a report, and here it is. So, that's where we're voting on right now. Okay. All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Thank you.
Eight point three, planning report 2018-40 in reference to site plan control approval, Grayor Essex County District School Board, Essex Public School. This is together with bylaw 1754 being a bylaw to enter into a site plan control agreement. Said report for receipt, that council support the site plan control application, uh, for the construction of a childcare center addition to the Essex Public School, and that bylaw 1754 received three readings this evening.
Sorry. Moved by Councillor Rogers, supported by Councillor Snively. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries.
Eight point four, planning 2018-41, re-site plan control agreement, uh, site plan control approval, R and K Robinson Holdings Incorporated. This is together with bylaw 1755, uh, to enter into a site plan control agreement. For receipt, that, and that council support the site plan control application, and that bylaw 1755 accordingly, uh, received three readings this evening.
Moved by Councillor Bondi, supported by Councillor Rogers. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries.
Eight point five, building department report 2018-09, re-September 2018, building report summary for receipt.
Councillor Bjorkman and Councillor Bondi and Councillor Snively, question, comment?
Through your, your worship, just, just to, uh, to Jeff, if he could, just give an update on, uh, on Delabona because a lot of the public like to know what the holdup is there. It's not, it's not our municipality here that is a holdup, but if you can explain what's going on.
Through Mr. Mayor, that's correct. Basically, they were polishing off some requirements and mandates of the Essex Region Conservation Authority, and, uh, my latest correspondence with the engineers that they've resolved them, and we should be close to having things closed and ready for development. That's correct.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries.
Item ten, any updates from county council this evening?
Deputy Mayor Maloche.
Thank you, through your worship. Uh, there's a lot of, a lot of items that are just winding up as it's the end of the term, but, uh, if anybody's interested, there's, uh, an interesting report coming up on our Wednesday night council meeting, uh, in regard to, um, the upgrade of County Road 20, but between Kingsville and Leamington. So, um, there's a multimillion-dollar package going on there, but it's been in the works for a number of years, and, um, the money's there in reserves because this was one of the routes that were identified as being, um, transportation headache, uh, when they were talking about, "Let's get Windsor, Essex going." And, uh, finally, it's coming to fruition, and this is like after 15 to 20 years from when it was identified. But, um, it's nice to see that the county is actually, you know, it's not just all the roadways that lead from Windsor out into the county. There's actually other roadways that they're, that we're working on that, uh, are out in the county, uh, doesn't have anything to do with the link necessarily going just into Windsor. But it's a good read, um, and, um, perhaps there's some insight into perhaps what could be happening with roads that would, uh, that are linking Essex to other communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Eleven point one, correspondence for receipt, that the correspondence listed in agenda item 11.1 be received and to share with the community where appropriate.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Maloche, supported by Councillor Bondi. I just have a comment, I'll, I'll make it now, like I said, on the roof and water treatment board, and there's, in our July, the second meeting in this report, there's a, a big report that I thought was pretty important to us in this area. It has to do with the algae that we've noticed in the lakes the last couple of years, but I want to let you know that a Sinophacteria monitoring station has been installed at wastewater, Union Wastewater Place, and as a part of a blue-green algae study. It costs $12 million to do this study with no cost to any of us. Uh, it's being led by the University of Montreal Ecole Polytechnique, and the boss down there also knows the equipment is worth approximately $40,000. At the end of the study, it, it will belong to us to keep. Uh, he feels this is valuable study in part and will provide data via cellular reception back to Montreal. So, you know, we know we've got problems down here. It is being looked after by many ministries, so that's just, uh, an update to some of the people, like Larry, who's a fisherman, uh, we're working on that algae problem. Thank you. With that, all in favor of the motion? Motion carries.
Eleven point two, correspondence to be considered for receipt or receipt in support. Eleven point two point one, that the correspondence from the town of Lake Shore to the Ministry of Transportation advising that Lake Shore request the ministry to consider authorizing municipalities to implement flashing traffic lights when appropriate and based upon the time of the day. Be received or received and supported. If so, supported, the appropriate letter of support to be sent.
Moved by Councillor Ron Rogers, supported by Councillor Bjorkman. Question, Ron? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries.
Eleven point two point two, that the correspondence from the township of Monique to the Premier of Ontario advising that Monique's council supports the AMCTO in requesting that the provincial government undertake consultation with municipalities prior to modifying legislation that affects municipal governments, uh, sorry, municipal governments. Be received or received and supported. If so, supported, the appropriate letter of support to be sent.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Maloche, supported by Councillor Bondi. Any questions? All in favor?
Eleven point two point three, that correspondence from the township of Amareto to the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change requesting that the licensing process to take water for commercial water bottling facilities be the same as the municipal licensing process and be subject to source water protection regulations. For receipt or receive in support, and, and once again, if so, supported, appropriate letter of support.
Moved by Councillor Bondi, supported by Councillor Rogers. Any questions? All in favor?
Receiving the support, yeah. Item 12 on the agenda, committee minutes, that the minutes listed in agenda item 12, together with any recommendations noted therein, be received and adopted as circulated.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Maloche, supported by Councillor Volks. Any questions to, to any of them? Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the Police Services Board, perhaps the new term of council, our Police Services Board members can bring forward the ideas that are being floated around by other municipalities, like an amalgamation of Police Services Board. I, this, I do not know anything about anything Police Services Board that's going on, but our residents are going to want to know, and, and they're, they're starting to ask. So, perhaps when we have orientation that can come forward from our current reps or new reps, and, um, and then we can let our public know what's going on, because I know they're, they're starting to question already, and I don't have any answers.
Just to that, Councillor Bondi, we don't have any answers yet either. It came up, I think, in our last zone meeting. Lake Shore presented something with regards to amalgamating, you know, with many of them. At our next zone meeting, which I forget the date right now, it's not too far away, they're going to bring that up, you know, and discuss it as Zone Six, our area. So, we don't know anything either yet. Okay. Thank you. And further, with all of these, all in favor of the motion? Motion carries.
Thirteen point one point one, that the bank payments report for the month of August 2018 be ratified as submitted.
Moved by Councillor Bondi, supported by Councillor Bjorkman. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries.
And thirteen point one point two, that the bank payments report for the month of September 2018 be ratified as submitted.
By Councillor Snively, supported by Councillor Bondi. Any questions? All in favor? That passes?
Item 15, notice this motion. Uh, the following notice of motion, uh, for, uh, from Councillor Volks is supposed to be for presentment only this evening. Um, Councillor Volks, do you, in, in light of corporate services reported earlier this evening, do you wish to withdraw or state your notice of motion? It, it's supposed to come back for consideration at the November 19th meeting.
Yeah, I, I have a motion I'd like to put forward if I could.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Um, I just want to put, put a motion forward that the town of Essex create a policy for accident cost recovery for local towing companies that include towing, cleanup, and demerage, and that this policy is developed and presented within this term of council.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we need a second for that?
Uh, no, it's just for presentment only. It'll come back for consideration November 19th, Mr. Chair.
And if I could, something for the next meeting. It, it was, it was talked to tonight here about the, the vehicle that went over the cliff and sat in the water and contaminated the environment, and that- and contaminated the environment, and that towing company now is on the hook for an excess of six thousand dollars. And then we said here tonight, Council Snively had said there tonight, that blame the federal government. What are we going to do about the federal government?
Council Volks, if I may?
If I could, it's for the next meeting.
No, no, if I may?
Yes.
I just don't got to run the meeting.
Sure.
This isn't on the agenda, so we can't, right?
It's part of my presentation.
Excuse me. I just, your presentation is done, you made your motion, there's no discussion to your motion, and I just asked the clerk if I should allow this, the idea, and I'm right, and he approved, that it is not on the agenda, so we can't discuss this. What happened? It happened in that other thing, because we were talking about cost recoveries, but this is a brand-new topic that...
It's not a new topic.
I'm not going to allow it to happen.
All I wanted to know is why can't we approach the federal government to get our money back?
It's not our money, sir.
We didn't do anything.
It's not our money.
We represent those people.
Okay. I'm not going to argue with you. That's the end of the topic.
It's not complicated. Just get a hold of the federal government and get them their money back.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, go ahead, please.
Fifteen point two is a notice of motion that was presented at the October first two thousand eighteen meeting, and is being brought forward for consideration this evening. As moved by Council Bjorkman, that administration prepare a report to council regarding a bylaw to regulate where in the town of Essex a licensed medical marijuana retailer can be located. We need a second there on that.
Council Bjorkman, like to say something? We'll get a second there first. Second there, Council Rogers?
Sure.
Yep. With, yes, you may. Go ahead. You have a, you're first. Yep.
I just wanted to ask Counselor Bjorkman if he wanted to extend that to all marijuana outlets, because we're just looking at medical marijuana here, and the retail marijuana outlets are out there waiting to happen.
I will accept, that's the first time I saw medical. I never wrote medical on anything. Yeah, no, good call, it's retail.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. The medical one, we all want, I think. You're right, Ron, thanks. Okay, we have a second there, right? So that's the end of that one. Thank you. Oh, it's, tonight it's for consideration. So, anyone else? Council Bjorkman?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, what I'd like to do, the idea here is for administration to go back and look at all of the things that are out there right now. We're talking about, especially with the retail, we already have bylaws that affect our grow-ups, we have bylaws with regard to, I believe there's something there for the medical, but as far as retail sales, we haven't got anything right now. Before January twenty-second, this new council's going to have to decide whether they want to opt in or opt out of receiving licenses for the town of Essex. So should we receive licenses for the town of Essex, then we need to have some sort of apparatus where we can govern where these things are. So I just have a quick thing I want to share to help direct administration, and where I'd like to see them going, if anybody else wants to add on to it. This is an excerpt from Leamington, has already done a full report and their bylaws, so I spoke with Peter Neufeld, the CAO, and asked him if I could use a couple of the points from theirs. And it says, "The town of Essex Council has the power to regulate cannabis production, loungers, and retailers under Section one twenty-eight of the Mispel Act." So it's something we are allowed to do that's in the act. If, in the opinion of council, these could become a cause of public nuisance, then we enact our bylaws. In Section one twenty-nine of the Act, municipalities are allowed to prohibit and to regulate with respect to noise, vibration, odor, dust, and outdoor illumination. So that's the parameters that we can work within. In the summary of Public Health comment, Health Canada notes that it is important that the thresholds established create an opportunity for small businesses to enter the regulated industry at a scale that does not create too great a burden on federal compliance and enforcement resources. So read cost of inspectors. They're allowing things to go forward, but they don't want it to be too cumbersome to them. So that's putting it back on us. Without the assurances that the federal regulatory regime will be robustly enforced and sufficiently resourced, a municipal government cannot simply let the industry open for business without its own regulatory tools to prevent the possible public nuisances that may arise from inadequate regulation. So it's going to be up to us to protect our town and protect our residents and the other businesses that are around. Now, the need for municipal regulation should not be driven by a desire to restrict legitimate producers and users, but to prevent the abuse and to protect the residents from the potential of the harmful effects of unregulated activity. This is going to be a legal business. This is going to come to our area. So it's up to us to ensure that everything that's legal to do and is allowed to do, we make sure that that can happen and flourish in our neighborhoods, not necessarily our neighborhoods, but in our areas, but also make sure it doesn't adversely affect businesses and people that are already here. So that's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
You very much, sir. Deputy Mayor Malasch.
Thank you through your worship. One of the words that Counselor Bjorkman used was odor, and I know that, I've had incidences where I've, we do have grow-up operations that are legal, licensed, here in the town of Essex, and I've had some experience with, on occasion, of one particular grow-up in Ward Two, again, legal grow-up operation, but under the old federal rules, where they don't have to have the proper ventilation, and quite a nuisance to the neighbors. That skunkish smell, in certain instances, I've been at some of these neighbors' homes through the summer, you couldn't even possibly sit out on the patio, because the smell was so strong, at their houses, and their houses weren't even right next door, they were like a little ways down the street. So as long as the wind was blowing in that direction, they had problems sitting outside. So my concern would be that we want to make sure that we put something in place where maybe they have to be standalone buildings, because if you have a building that, and I'm not even sure if we can do this, but it has to pass the odor test, because you don't want it getting into the other businesses that smell, if they're going to have some kind of skunkish smell, particular clothing store or something like that. So it may have to be a standalone building, and we may have to, I think, perhaps dedicate certain areas of the town where it's possible to have that type of a business, to keep it out of the, keeping other businesses that are already established from having to move their location because of interference from that business. So just wanted to point that out, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council Volks?
I don't, I really don't get the odor thing, because the reason I don't get the odor thing is I got pot here right now, and everybody's sitting there saying the smells, nobody's complaining here. Did you smell that, Steve? Did you? Yeah, yeah. So I don't get it personally myself, and I don't know why we're attacking, I don't know why we're attacking the marijuana stores in terms of establishing them in town, because in terms of vehicular death, nothing kills people more quicker, it's not the marijuana smokers, it's the people drinking the hard liquor and the beer that are killing people. So before we define where we're going to put the LCBOs in the beer store, and define where we're going to put the marijuana outlets, we should bring them into it too, because I think the intent is to push them outside of town where they're on an island by themselves. So we better be pushing the LCBO with them, and we better be pushing the beer stores with them, because they got just as much right to be in town as anybody else. And I don't even know why we're taking this giant on, to be quite frank with you, but anyways, I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else? Council Snively?
Through your worship, I think what happened here, when the government, senior government come out and authorize and license these grow-ups, like we have one in Ward Three, totally legal with the federal government, totally illegal with our municipal bylaw. I believe our setback is a thousand feet, a thousand feet, and this one in particular, just to give you an example, is within a hundred feet of a house. So I think that's where the problem is. I think when it come out from the federal government, when they approved this, they give out licenses, and I think they didn't consider our municipality bylaws, and they went out and handed out these licenses, and we have a grow-up out in Ward Three where there's five or six huge greenhouses, and you can't sit there, believe me, without that smell. You can't. It's pathetic, so.
Anyone else? Couple comments. I agree, the word, and this is kind of to the incoming council. Best word that we've talked about probably for the last month was a standalone building. One council member says, "We're kicking them out of town." Not so. You know, a standalone building is different, and if you don't think this stuff smells, go to the CIBC, Talbotan Center.
Point of order, that's not true. I'm a member of the...
Excuse me, sir. Okay, let me get your point of order.
That's not fact. That's not fact.
Let me get your point of order, and I'll deal with it. Don't just come yelling out, okay, you have a point of order. What is it?
Your point of order is you're creating a fallacy in terms of go to the CIBC, you can smell it in there. I'm a member of the CIBC, and you can't smell it in there, and that's the truth. So for you as a mayor to sit there and tell everybody that if you go into the CIBC, you can smell it, that's a fallacy.
Okay. I hear your, I hear your point of order. Okay? I hear your point of order. I'm going to deal with it now, okay? So you're done. I am going to deal with your point of order. My job now is to listen to what you've said or continue, and I am not going to listen to what you say, because I'm going to continue, because I have been in the CIBC. Hey, sir, one more word, and you know what happens? I have, you're getting, you're, hey, listen, I'm going to warn you, right? Listen! I'm warning you, and one more word. Get out. Get out. I'm not putting up with this. Leave, please. I just kicked you out of the meeting. So you're not going to leave?
No.
Okay. Recession. Tell this man to leave. There'll be a recess.
Yeah, I shouldn't have gone. Shoot.
Okay, this time I'll re-convene the meeting. And Councilor Voxx has rights, and I am going to give his rights. He may remain part of the council if he apologizes to council and everyone present in the room. He has that opportunity. If he chooses to do that, he may still take part in the council meeting. If he refuses to do that, he must go at least to the chairs out there in the public and have no further comment in this meeting. So, Councilor Voxx, you have the opportunity to apologize and stay in your chair.
The truth is, is that you--
No truth, sir.
You're gonna let me speak, or you--
No, I'm not. I'm asking you if you're gonna apologize.
You mentioned the CIBC bank. You mentioned the CIBC bank. They work hard every day. They work hard every day on trying to get customer base, and you mentioned specific businesses. You got, please do it. You got, you got no right--
Mr. Mayor, please.
You have absolutely no right to mention the CIBC as a place that stinks, and that's what you've done.
Call him, please. Call him!
Do we really need to waste police resources for this?
No kidding.
I think Councilor Voxx is just offended because a specific business was named--
That's right.
Doesn't want--
And if you wouldn't mention the business, I wouldn't be-- That's not true. You're lying again.
Can we finish the meeting?
Can somebody call a point of order against him, please? Please stop him. He simply said a business stinks, that being the CIBC. They work hard every day getting consumer base, and I'm not gonna let him, mayor or no mayor, I'm not gonna let him do that.
Are you calling a recess, Mr. Mayor?
I am calling a recess, yes, sir. Again.
You need to apologize to CIBC before the corporate office gets a hold of us tomorrow. That's what you need to do. And you not, you have absolutely no right saying that the CIBC in that place stinks. I know when you're lying. I may not know everything, but I know when you're lying. I know when you're lying, and you know you shouldn't be doing that. That's fine.
You guys are getting the big bucks now. You're getting, we're getting all the big bucks, eh?
Is it worth it? Is it all worth it?
Is that gonna be the one we were talking about?
See, it's giving us the mayor. He's gonna do what he's apologizing, and the rest of us sit over there. That's right.
Are we meeting? Why didn't we come--
Yeah, we're meeting.
They're on their way upstairs right now.
Well, I'm going up the door. I'm not gonna be in here when they take them up.
That's, we're not meeting.
They're waiting. I know, I turned them on. I don't know what's on there.